All right, we are gonna go ahead and call to order the final Oakdale City Council Meeting of the Year, December 12th, 2023. Sir, will you take the role?
Councilmember Herr.
Here.
Councilmember Ingbritson.
Here.
Councilmember Morecambe.
Here.
Councilmember Willenbring.
Here.
Mayor Zabel.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, councilmembers, we have a very full agenda tonight, so let's get at it. In front of us, we have an amended version. I'm gonna request one additional change. Depending on when people arrive, it may be a little fluid, so we'll just kinda play it by ear. And I see Jim getting all squirrely over there.
Not yet.
No, he's good.
Not yet.
So I'm gonna suggest moving the open forum section and the items under that up on the agenda under the line, "Reading Regular Meeting." So is everybody clear on that? So can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final conversation. Woo, those lights are bright. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And the agenda is a-
By the way, I voted aye, sorry. I was blinded by the light.
You wanna break into that song?
No.
First up on our agenda tonight is our annual truth and taxation public hearing. This is a meeting required by state law, and it's a valuable opportunity for our residents and anybody watching or curious to get a sneak peek at the 2024 city budget, as well as to participate and provide comment to the city council. So, I don't have a script, so I assume I just kinda ad lib this.
Yes.
All right, so at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open the truth and taxation meeting. This meeting will begin with a presentation by our Finance Director, Kyle Stasakka, and then we will formally open a public hearing, invite public comment, and then close it, and then bring it back up for, back up to the city council, and we'll continue on with our regular meeting. So, with that, we're gonna go ahead and turn things over to our Finance Director, Mr. Stasakka. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just wanna start with, just to thank Council and Mayor for your direction during this process. We started in late April, early May with this, and, you know, since then, we've had about eight council sessions on this. Along with that, I wanted to thank City Administrator Volkers, along with former Finance Director Jason Zimmerman, and then our department heads and their staff for their assistance in this entire process. And with that, we'll move to the truth and taxation meeting. So, per Minnesota Statute 275, cities with a population over 500 are required to hold a public meeting between November 24th and December 28th, and each year to discuss their budget and levy. The goal of this truth and taxation meeting is to enhance transparency and public engagement. The truth and taxation meeting follows the approval of the proposed levy. The City of Oakdale's proposed levy was approved at the September 12th city council meeting. This proposed levy was set at a 13.46% increase from 2023, was used to generate the proposed tax statements. These statements were delivered to taxpayers from November 11th through the 24th, and once set, these can only be decreased. The levy has since been decreased to 12.45% for this presentation and council's consideration. I encourage the public, for more detail, please, this PowerPoint will be online. We have our Open Gov Transparency Portal, and along with that, you know, Finance Department's available to walk through any questions. So for, just to walk through the city's budgetary principles, first one here, consider and acknowledge both the short and long-term impacts of decisions, stabilize revenues and expenditures, and fund operations at a level to provide quality services, maintain structural balance and appropriate fund balances, and consider additional investments when they help achieve city goals. I'll highlight a few of these prioritized objectives, focusing on essential city services, maintaining high-quality operated public safety departments, investing in modern technology, funding annual street reconstruction and maintenance projects, and enhancing city parks, trails, open spaces, and facilities. These will be a few of the common property tax terms we will run into during this presentation. First one, market value is an assessed value determined by the Washington County Assessor's Office. This value is defined as the usual selling price at the time of assessment. The next one, market value exclusion. There's a slide later on dedicated to this, but it is for homesteaded properties. Market value less this homestead exclusion, for the most part, that it equals their taxable market value for the property. Jumping down to the final bullet point, median value residential property. This is the commonly used example for property taxes and their effects. Due to the nature of property values, data having outliers for, you know, very small and large valued parcels, median value is considered a stronger representative of the data than the mean or average. Here's a consolidated timeline of the property taxes. Starting in January is property values are established for next year's taxes, valuation notices in February sent out, and then jump into December where we currently are. The final levies, you know, must be set by all taxing authorities by December. And why do property taxes change? So this isn't a complete list, but these are some of the main reasons. Fluctuations in market values, changes in non-levy revenue sources, levies at various jurisdictions, debt issuance, voter-approved referendums, and state legislative changes, a few of them. Here are the 2024 proposed levy and assessment highlights. Total citywide assessed property values are up 12.6% from 2023. The estimated median valued residential property is 343,000 this year, which is up 9%. This median valued residential property has increased 120% since 2013. The preliminary city tax rate shows a decrease estimated at 0.697% from 2023, and this proposed 2024 levy is a 12.45% increase from 2023. On to budget highlights for 2024, there's an investment in city-operated policing. There's funding for three new licensed officers, two new squad vehicles, along with one new unmarked command unit. There's a commitment to full-career modeled fire department. In 2023, the city transitioned to this staffing model, and only 2.8% of fire departments in the state have achieved this distinction. There's an investment in city facilities, equipment, trails, open spaces, and parks, with funding for an additional public works maintenance position, the annual replacement of one existing park, planning for two parks, walking paths, and open spaces at the Willbrook Development. And then there's increased support for the growing city, including new funding for Assistant City Administrator, and software improvements to modernize resident reporting of non-emergency community issues. And then the final bullet point here, this budget and related levy reduced the debt levy for the fourth consecutive year to the lowest since 2017. Now we will go through valuation changes and their tax impacts. So going through the assessing responsibility in the process, Washington County provides the assessing services for the City of Oakdale. Minnesota statutes establish specific requirements for the assessment of property, and the law requires that real property is valued at market value, and this is defined as the most likely selling price as of the January 2nd assessment date. So for the estimated market values established through the 2023 assessor report are based upon actual real estate trends from October 1st, 2021, through September 30, 2022. Then this 2023 assessment values are then used to calculate taxes payable for 2024. Here's a consolidated table on the Oakdale's payable 2024 values by property type. On the far right of the table, resident, I'll go through the far right of the table, this residential property type increased 9.25%, agricultural 8.8%, apartment 30%, commercial industrial 20%, and in total, 12.6%. Here we have a comparison between Washington County and Oakdale for their 2024 market value composition. Washington County has quite a bit more residential as a percentage of the total compared to Oakdale, while Oakdale has more apartment and commercial, industrial. And this is a comparison of Oakdale from 2023 to 2024 and their market value composition. Very little change, slight decrease in residential, that was then increases in apartment and commercial, and it's important to note, the decrease here is just a percentage of the total. As we saw on that earlier slide, residential did increase, it's just apartments and commercial industrial increased more. Here we have another comparison with Washington County and Oakdale. This is residential properties only, and it's their market value growth drivers. Washington County, 80% of their residential market growth was related to appreciation of the property, and 20% for new construction. Oakdale's at 93% for appreciation and 7% for new construction. We note that there is a lag in, as I mentioned prior with Washington County Assessor Report, so any new developments that are currently ongoing in the City of Oakdale would not, may not have fully hit this market value composition yet. Here's a bar graph on the change in residential assessed values for Oakdale, and as you could see, in the increases, over about 97.3% of all residential parcels experienced an increase in their assessment values for the payable 2024. And here's that same information for Oakdale with Washington County side by side. Pretty similar, except for the 0.1 to 5% increase and the 5.1 to 10%. Oakdale has more in that 5 to 10%, Washington County has more in the 1 to, or 0 to 5. And just to point, as you can see, very few decreases in values. Here's a trend, property trend since 2008 for the median valued residential property. Back in 2008, it was at 222,000. It dipped in 2013 to 157,000, and then last year was at 315,000, and current year, 343,000. This is another bar graph comparing Oakdale with, we have, these are the 10 most populous Washington County cities, along with the county median, and Oakdale's value change for that median residential property is above the county median, and it stacks up well against other Washington County cities. And back to earlier slides, this is primarily through appreciation and not through new construction. That just shows Oakdale is a desirable place to live. And here we have a heat map from 2012 through 2023, and I'm gonna highlight the second column on the right. This is the cumulative, and this is what it's sorted by, and since 2012, Oakdale's second in Washington County for the most populous cities, at 120, about 120% increase in the market value for that median residential property. And then in the far column on the right, there's 169 residential unit increase. This also speaks to it's been through appreciation, not through new construction. And another heat map on that, on those residential units, as you can see in the column, the second on the right. So Oakdale's kind of in the middle here, but as you can see, the ones above Oakdale, much more new, are new residential units. And then we have the 69 new construction starts for the City of Oakdale, and that just shows that these developments are starting, and that new construction value will start to flow more into the value. And here we have another comparison with the major Washington County cities. Oakdale, the estimated tax on that median value residential property is $1,279, which is fourth on this list, so it compares quite well to the other major cities in the county. And here we have an example of what, one dollar towards just the city, towards, towards your property taxes would go towards, and this is, the example's on, once again, the residential median value. And so for every tax dollar paid for a parcel in ISD 622 in the Valley Branch Watershed District, 40, 40.4% would be for the school district, 34.5% for the city, 20% for the county, 2% for Valley Branch, and about 3% all other taxing authorities. Moving along through the proposed budget and the city-based property tax levy, the table at the bottom shows the levy components, the operating, the debt, and the capital, and in total, it's an $18 million, $65,000 levy, which is a 12.45% increase from the previous year. Here's a table on the general funds budgeted revenues for 2024. Budgeted, so that operating levy flows into that top line item, the ad valorem taxes, and then total operating revenues are $22,211,000, which is a 9.2% increase from the previous year. Here's a table on the general funds budgeted expenditures. It's a balanced budget, so the same total as the revenue, $22,211,000, 9.2% increase. Here's a debt levy trend since 2015, just showing on that portion of the levy that it has decreased the last four years, and it is at its lowest level since 2017. And diving a little bit more into that debt levy, a portion of our debt is equipment certificates, and this portion of the debt is anticipated to be satisfied by 2026, and that is due to, we, the city has made the decision to, for vehicles and large equipment to, expected to internally finance these. Here's an estimated city tax calculation. We're using the median valued residential property, less their homestead exclusion, we get their taxable market value of 337,000. The state class rate for a residential homestead is 1%. We get our tax capacity of about 3,300, and we apply the estimated property tax rate, we get the estimated taxes, city taxes only of $1,279. This table goes through the tax impact for residential property with no change in value. So as I mentioned earlier, 2023's median valued residential property was at 315,000. So if we apply that to 2024, along with the levy for 2024, up for consideration, there is an actual, we show a decrease of $8 in their estimated tax bill, city portion only. And here's a table going over the tax impact for the residential property with that value increase to 343,000, and it is an estimated increase of $109, which is about $9 per month. And here we show the monthly distribution of those estimated city taxes, so that $1,279 over 12 months, $106 per month. So just to highlight a few of them, you know, police, $27 per month, public works, $17, fire EMS, $15. Now we'll go through an example truth and taxation statement. So truth and taxation notices, this proposed tax notice delivered after November 10th in honor before November 24th to each taxpayer. These TNT notices include parcel-specific proposed taxes by jurisdiction, and these notices do not include impacts for voter-approved referendums in the current year, which there were none. So this example property was picked because it mimics the median residential property, you know, it's pretty close, it's got the 316,000 for 2023, and the 346,000 for 2024. And so walking through this proposed tax notice, the estimated market value at the top, that's determined by Washington County Assessor. Next line item is that homestead exclusion. After that exclusion, along with any others or deferrals, we get the taxable market value, and then the class of the parcel is listed on here, and this example's a residential homestead. And then this sample property, the estimated market value increased 29,800 or 9.4%. And here's a slide on that homestead market value exclusion. So this exclusion reduces the market value for property classified as homestead, as long as it's valued below $413,800. And just to jump through the, it's a pretty complicated formula, just to jump through it, and I can go over in detail if anyone has further questions on it, but. So for this sample property, the exclusion is reduced due to the increase in market value. It's reduced $2,700, and the estimated tax impact of this is about $10.25, or 9% of the increase in city taxes. And I'm actually gonna jump back to, so in 2023 legislative session, this was updated, and the update to this exclusion will take effect 2025 taxes payable. And prior to that, it had been, it has been frozen at this $413,800 since 2011. Moving on, on the truth and taxation notice, it includes the proposed taxes for each jurisdiction. These levies can be reduced but not increased prior to final approval. The contact information, meeting location, date, and time are on there. And sample property taxes, for this sample, the property taxes are up $267 or 7.7% versus the market value increase of 9.4. On the back page of the truth and taxation notices is the supplemental budget information insert, and this is per Minnesota Statute 275, 065 subdivision 3B, and this supplemental information is for the county, all cities and all school districts in the county, and it includes the certified levy for the current taxes payable year, the proposed levy for the following, and then the final column is the increase/decrease between these two amounts of percentage. And now we will walk through a few property tax relief programs offered. So the State of Minnesota offers two programs for homestead properties and rentals. The two are the regular and the special. I will dive into the details of these, but each have specific qualifications to be met. Complete program information, I'd encourage everyone to go to the State of Minnesota's revenue website. And then just to point out, the special property tax refund was, there was, it was an update for 2023 to, so that qualification for that 6% increase in the property tax was 12%, and then that maximum refund went up from 1,000 to 2,500. And then the senior citizen property tax deferral program, this is offered through the State of Minnesota. Once again, there's certain thresholds to be met, and I'd encourage anyone who believes they may be eligible, please visit the State of Minnesota's website to find full detail, and if we can be of assistance, please let us know. And the last, the last slide I have here, just the action items. Number one, conduct the truth and taxation meeting, then allow for public input and comments, and consider resolutions adopting the 2024 property tax levy and related budgets, and the 2024 through 2028 capital improvement plan, along with authorizing the fiscal year 2024 projects. And with that, I turn it back over to the Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Kyle. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. This is an opportunity for anybody joining us to provide feedback, provide comments, even ask questions on what Kyle just walked through. So everything from property tax levies to the proposed 2024 budget. All we ask is, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. This just allows us to keep an accurate record, and for anybody watching on YouTube to hear the questions and information as well. But this is an opportunity, please feel free to step on up. Going once, going twice. Welcome. Somebody's gotta be first, right?
Randy Shea. Did you say?
Address, please.
7793 Ninth Street North, Oakdale. Just a quick question about the homestead exclusion. What did they update it to for 2025? Do you know?
Yes, so, thank you, Mayor. So for 2025, they'll be updating it. So it's currently, the formula's set at, it looks at a property at $76,000, and the max exclusion is 40% of that, which is about $30,400. And that $30,400 is slowly, for every amount over $76,000 in market value, 9% of that reduces that $30,400. It's a complicated formula, but they updated it. So instead of $76,000 as the base, it'll be $95,000. So then the exclusion will, I guess, be reduced to zero to higher number.
Yeah, I was comparing it to the $413,000 that it's at.
Oh, I'd have to run the, I can get back to you on that calculation.
Okay. It's more of a state question, but it seems like it's appreciation and inflation and all that does its numbers, so you're getting a default tax increase because that's, that homestead exclusion was never tied to inflation or appreciation or anything. So it's, that's just a default. My other question is, I was trying to follow it in there, but I believe we had the levies voted through for the sales tax that kinda helped with the building renovations for Public Works and Police Department. And so other than that, why such a large increase each year over two years in the city taxes of nearly 16% last year, and now another, is it 9 or 12% this year?
I'll take that one.
And I guess I'm saying, I guess I'm saying that I never pay attention to my home valuation that much because the whole thing should work such that everybody's market values go up, and to create the same amount of revenue, the tax levy goes down, plus whatever you gotta cover for additional expenditures, inflation, things like that. But it seems like this, so I kind of expect it to be about the same, plus whatever inflation has to cover. And, but it seems like it's been a, from years where it's just been 1%, 2%, and holding pretty steady, it's two big increases in two years while we still voted the tax levy, or the sales tax levy through.
Yeah, I'll take that. So the sales tax piece, that's not factored into the property tax levy, so that is separate. Obviously, that, as you mentioned, that is a voter approval, but that is separate from this conversation. That's just what any visitor or resident will pay at establishments in Oakdale. As for the property tax levy, you know, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, the biggest driver is the increase in valuations. Kyle, I don't know if you can pull up that slide. You know, for the city this year alone, you know, our value as a city went up, you know, citywide went up about 10%, I think it was, maybe 11%. It was $400 million on a $4 billion tax base. But at the same time for the city, we cut our tax rate, the rate that goes onto the property taxes for, I think, the third or the fourth straight year. So while it, the levy, the city levy says it's going up 12%, our rate's actually going down, and the big, the contributing factor there is values have gone up so much. Also, about $80 million in new construction. So, new, new- So new, new developments, everything coming in, they're not paying property taxes, so that goes into the total amount. The city levy is really just a total pot of money being collected. It doesn't really say much for individual property owners and what they're paying. It's just saying how much is being collected in total. So as the pie has gotten bigger, because we've appreciated, what, $387 million, we've added 80 million in new construction, that's what's really attributing to that 12.4, 12.6% in the levy increase. They're paying it, it's being paid on appreciation and values. So as a city, like I said, we cut the rate, but because your values went up so much, that's...
Well, I understand that values go up. They go up so much, but to generate the same amount of revenue for the city, then the levy would go down to generate the same revenue, so it would balance out. And then, of course, there's got to be some increase just because you're increasing costs for inflation as well.
Absolutely. You know, you mentioned years past, you know, some years were 1% or 2%, now we're looking at 12. One big driver in that has been a philosophical change at the city. You know, I think two years ago, as a city, or as a city council, we said we no longer want to take out debt or put vehicles on our credit card. We want to pay cash instead. In the long run, that has been something that will save the city money because we're no longer paying 10 years of debt service on a vehicle we may only have for five years. But that has required money to be collected to pay for those expenditures. Previously, we just put it, you know, we didn't tax for it, we just put it on the credit card and then paid over the course of 10 years. So that's been a philosophical change for the city. You know, it's something that, as interest rates have climbed, has actually worked to our advantage because we're paying less in debt service. I think, Kyle, you said this is the lowest amount of debt we'll pay as a city since 2017, which is, I would argue, is pretty substantial. You know, for that to drop, that does mean we have to collect more to offset that.
Okay. And the other factor is, is a lot of the new development that's coming in, that's not paying for itself yet, and so it's kind of like pay in advance.
Some, you know, so when you look at what Kyle laid out as big changes in the budget, so adding three police officers, for example, that is, you know, responding to the needs in our community, absolutely. I would argue that we probably should have added three, three years ago, you know, just knowing what the needs of the community are. We are a growing city, absolutely. So every time you add a development, you know, there's more plow trucks and park maintenance workers and police officers and firefighters to support that. And so new construction was 80 million this year. I think it is entirely safe to assume that will be well north of 100 million next year and many, many years after that, as our community continues to build out.
Okay. Well, I'm just voicing a little bit of concern that over two years, it's been 16% last year and now a proposed around 10 or 12% this year. That's a pretty big increase in multiple years.
Yeah, and I, the only comment I'll make, inflation is crushing us. It is, it is. I mean, you look at the Public Works project as a good example. For the same, exact same facility, we put the sales tax on the ballot for, what, 22 million? We're looking at six to eight million more dollars for the exact same building, what, two and a half years later, for the exact same thing. I mean, that, and, you know, we're not exempt for that, you know, and it's, it's very difficult. We, you know, we're elected to make these tough decisions, and I feel the pain just like you do, you know?
Maybe it's not the same infrastructure, but Washington, the county seems to be holding and not getting quite as, as impacted by that inflation number as the city is, but it's a different makeup of...
Yeah, and we're in a situation in Oakdale right now where we incorporated, what, was it, 1974, Chris? It was early 70s that Oakdale became a city. We built all this infrastructure, we're 50 years on, and now all that infrastructure's reaching the end of its useful life, and it's all kind of coming at once. You know, and, you know, and another example of that is, you know, we just took our fire, our fire department from volunteer to full-time, and it was a necessity. We had to do it. There's some upfront pain on that, but long-term, there's going to be gain. And, you know, and as the mayor said, you know, we're, we're trying, you know, we're trying to structure things a little bit different financially, where there might be some pain upfront, but long-term, especially with higher interest rates, the residents long-term are going to benefit from this, so.
Okay. Just wanted to understand a little bit more about kind of significant two-year increase. Okay.
Understood.
Thank you.
Well, anything that can be done to kind of moderate that and spread it out over time will be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to comment on anything covered in the truth and taxation presentation? All right, we are going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We don't take an action yet, right? We just go right into the regular meeting? Looking at you, Jim. Close the public hearing for truth and taxation, we just roll right into the regular meeting? All right. So we're going to go ahead and move into the regular meeting. Council members, you'll remember, we made one slight change to the agenda, so we're going to slide into open forum. There were two items under there, so if you will indulge me for one quick minute. First was a proclamation. A proclamation issued earlier today recognizing Tartan's DECA chapter. Councilmember Herr and I were able to attend the opening of their new school store at Tartan High, which was pretty cool, and I had the opportunity to issue and read a proclamation, and it reads as follows. Whereas Tartan, Tartan High School's DECA chapter was founded in 1998, and their original school store was opened in 2006. And whereas DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management, which translates into community leadership. And whereas members in the DECA program learn real-world business, personal selling, and social skills, and have easy access to hands-on learning materials and obtain job references for the future. And whereas the Tartan DECA program enhances school spirit and promotes community growth and interaction with fellow students. And whereas members of DECA manage and operate the school store, earn credits while earning a paycheck, score articulated credits from Century College, and compete at the district, state, and international level with students from across the world. Therefore, I, Kevin Zabel, Mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim today, December 12th, 2023, as Tartan DECA Day in the city of Oakdale. All of us probably know Tartan has been under massive renovation for, oh boy, a year-plus now, and they have a year and a half to go, and it was evident everywhere in the building, but one shining spot was the new store, school store that they have at Tartan. They did a very nice job with it. The students are thrilled and excited to be operating it. And it was just a really cool opportunity to see students like that really engaged and enthusiastic about, you know, some real-world skills in managing businesses and interacting with consumers. So a big congratulations to Tartan DECA on that, and it's exciting to see where it goes. Noah, did you want anything? You were out there with...
You know, I would say that our future is very bright if we measure it by the DECA president, Eli Boerse, and the vice president, Kayla. Very well-spoken individuals that did a good job of representing...
Their chapter of the DECA program here, so. Yeah, I agree. Next up, before we begin to open forum, when we open things up to anybody that wants to talk about us anything, I want to talk about water. You know, and I just have some notes here, but, you know, undoubtedly, water quality remains a top-of-mind topic for Oakdale residents, past, present, and future. For more than 15 years now, our city has led the region in providing scientifically-verified PFAS-free water to our residents. More recently, legal settlements have unlocked hundreds of millions of dollars for cities across the region, Oakdale included, to build and expand on our efforts to provide clean and safe water to residents. One Oakdale resident in particular has been a leading voice in these efforts. Since 2018, Monica Stiglich, a 49-year resident of Oakdale, has volunteered and represented our city and our interests on numerous PFAS settlement working groups. Monica has brought her love for Oakdale, her passion for environmental initiatives, and a career's worth of professional experience to the table to advocate for our drinking water. Her contributions have not only played a pivotal role in improving the quality of life for current Oakdale residents, but has guaranteed it for, or guaranteed it as well for generations to come. To put it plainly, Oakdale will continue to lead the region in providing safe and clean water because of individuals like Monica Stiglich. Each year, Oakdale recognizes an individual or group that goes above and beyond in their service and volunteerism in our community. And it is with deep appreciation for her work and volunteerism in this community, the city council is honored to name Monica Stiglich as our 2023 Oakdale Volunteer of the Year. Monica's here, we told her she had to be ready to answer questions, so we may have lied a little bit, but Monica, we would like to invite you into the front. We're going to come down, take some photos. If you would like to say any words, please feel free. This community is incredibly grateful for the expertise, the passion you have put forward to advancing all of our common goals. So, thank you. Council, let's head down.
I didn't expect this. Christina, you were just a stinker. You said, "Oh, you might have to answer some questions."
Got you here, though, huh?
Yeah, you get me here.
Yes. Congratulations.
You really had no idea?
No.
You have well-deserved this.
Count to three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're everything we're going to have.
Thank you.
You're not the first one, are you, or are you...
No.
You've got all kinds of...
Okay.
I was just...
Amazing.
I don't know if we realized that Oakdale had just become a city when we moved here in 1974.
Oh.
So in July of '74, we are officially 50-year residents. That's a half a century.
Yeah, and I want to say it was '74. I'm pretty sure it was.
Monica knows.
I can't remember. I was busy working and accumulating knowledge. I mean, this was such a neat opportunity to get involved in the water settlement, because again, I had the 3M experience. I actually knew about the stuff because it was in my backyard, literally up there off of Grandada Avenue. And it's going to be exciting when the public works business gets going. I'll keep an eye on that for everybody. But this, this has really helped me get through retirement very nicely. I had just retired in the fall of, early, mid-2017, and then this opportunity came up to be in the water settlement working group. And it's been a lot of meetings, Christina. We've been in a lot of meetings, and with your predecessor also. But, you know, it's, it's that continuity and just knowing what the heck's been going on all these years. And Mayor, I think you said it really well. Oakdale has taken a leadership role on this whole, you know, dealing with the water issue and so on, and it's, it's a real source of pride for me to be able to be present at these meetings and represent the community. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We are still under open forum, so if there is anybody in the audience that would like to talk to us about anything, please feel free to step on up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, share whatever is on your mind. House rules, we try and keep to three minutes per person, but, you know, we're flexible. This is our last meeting of the year. We're loosey-goosey, so please feel free to step on up. Seeing none, we will keep things rolling and go into the 2024 Budget Levy and CIP, the Capital Improvement Program adoption. First up is the 2024 Property Tax Levy and the 24 General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Debt Service Fund, and Enterprise Fund. Do you have a staff presentation?
No, Mr. Ray, I don't think I can top what our finance director did, so unless there's further questions on it.
Council members, any questions? How about comments? Well, actually, let's, let's do a motion and second, and then if there are any amendments, we can tackle those, and then comments. How about that? So can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2023-129, adopting the 2024 Property Tax Levy and 2024 General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Debt Service Fund, and Enterprise Fund budgets.
There's a motion, is there a second? I would like the second. There is a second conversation, and if there are amendments, you can tackle it during this time. Conversation, anybody want to go first?
I'll take it. I have a comment, which I knew you were expecting. So I just, quick, easy couple of comments. This budget includes rate increases for water, sewers, streetlights, and surface water to finance future capital projects. Just want to put that out there, that there's rate increases. In general, I do not support fee and rate increases unless they're justified, transparent, and the burden on residents is respected and always front of mind. After many, many years of discuss, or many, many hours, excuse me, or years too.
Time, yeah.
Years of discussions with staff and colleagues, expressing my apprehension to the point that I'm pretty sure most of them were sick of hearing it, but thank you all for listening. And a weekend of deep diving into the budget on Open Gov, which I highly recommend, and relying on the integrity of staff, I feel comfortable with the rate increases as they are not intended to generate revenue but to cover legitimate expenses. Therefore, I will be voting to approve the budget, but with these comments added. Thank you.
Any other council members? Well, I will just make one comment. You know, for any, any government body, a budget is, in many ways, a moral document. You know, we, we take the values and the feedback from our community, we work it through the governing process, a process that we've all taken oaths to uphold, and we put forward a document that is really a roadmap for the future for our community. You know, as our finance director mentioned, it is a long process. You know, we will begin the 2025 process in a few months, which is depressing to say, but it is the reality, you know, that we take eight, nine months to do this because there are so many services that our residents value and rely upon. There are so many different ways that this city government can support, you know, our community, our residents, and the region at large. There are, you know, complicated services that we provide, whether it's fire or water, or making sure a plow truck has enough salt to go down the street at 2:00 in the morning when it snows 10 inches, you know? It is a very complicated process. The process works because we, our residents put their trust in us to continue providing the services that they value and respect. The process works because we have some of the best staff that any city could have. When they tell us that, when they offer us a recommendation, we know that they have looked at it seven different ways, anticipating what our questions and concerns would be, and knows that this is what makes most fiscal sense for our community. It is not easy ever to raise taxes or fees, but as, you know, my colleague, Councilmember Inger Britton, said, our community is growing, but our community is also aging. We are at the point, a point that most, you know, 694, 494 suburbs are in, where our initial infrastructure is at the end of its generational life, you know? And it is hard to say that it has to be replaced because it is so expensive, but that's just where we're at, unfortunately. And along the way, we've tried to make strategic decisions to lighten our debt load, to cut our tax rate, but not sacrifice those services that our residents expect and value. And so, you know, this budget has come together after many conversations, many heated conversations, and all of them for the better, you know? Because that's why our residents sent us here, is to beat this budget with a stick as many times as we possibly can to make sure we're not collecting a dollar we do not need, to make sure we are living within our means, but also keeping an eye on the future and providing the services we need. And like I said, none of this happens without trust and open communication, and every year I feel it's a little bit of a miracle that we get it across the finish line, but we get it done. So with that, we have a motion, we have a second. I'm going to get off my soapbox. We have a motion and a second, we've had conversation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose. And the 2024 Property Tax Levy, the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Debt Service Fund, and Enterprise Fund budgets are approved. Next up, we have the 2024 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan. Chris, staff presentation? Anything?
I don't have anything further.
All right.
Glad to answer questions.
All right. Council members, any questions for Chris on the CIP?
Council members, any questions for Chris on the CIP? I will look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2023-128, approving the 2024 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan and authorizing fiscally year 2024 projects.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final comments. Well, I'll just make one comment. You know, when we talk about long-term planning, this is the document where it happens. This is the specific projects where our city says what streets we're going to be, you know, patching and replacing next year, not patching, I guess, that's an operational thing, but replacing next year, what park improvements are going to be made, what streetlights are going to be replaced. This is the nitty-gritty of those core functions of city government, and it is something that I feel like every resident should look at at some time or another. You know, Councilmember Willenbring mentioned that, you know, yeah, sometimes there are rate increases, but it is done so with an eye to the future. When we look at the projects in the next five years, that's why we do what we do, is we have to be proactive with planning, spread some of this cost burden out, so we are lessening the long-term impact on our residents. And this is, we probably haggle more over this than we do anything else, but this is how we look to the future. This is a very important plan, and I encourage our residents to check it out. It's on Open Gov, available 24/7. There's a motion. There's a second. We've had some conversation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the 2024-2028 CIP is approved. Next up, we have approval of minutes. Two sets in front of us tonight. First up, workshop meeting minutes from November 28, 2023. Council members, were there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And those workshop meeting minutes are approved. Next up, we have regular meeting minutes from November 28, 2023. Council members, any changes or corrections? I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And those minutes are approved as well. Next up, a public hearing for establishing the fee schedule for 2024. This involves adopting an ordinance as well as authorizing publication by title and summary. But first, we will do the public hearing for that. Chris, do we have a staff presentation?
We do not. Mr. Mayor, City Council, if I could summarize, though, that'd be helpful.
That'd be wonderful.
Every year, we take a really deep dive look into our fee schedule, and we are authorized by statutes and our city code to oftentimes add fees on or recommend fees that cover the cost of the additional service. This is beyond basic public infrastructure that we do in the city of Oakdale. With that, we've been reformatting the document and bringing all things that weren't officially approved into the document. So there is one document, I think this is kind of the final revision. It's a very comprehensive list, but there is, I would find it hard to believe that there's something, a fee out there that isn't on the list. So, we are completely transparent at this point. That has been the goal. It's taken about three years to get to that point. So what we're presenting to you, we've talked about in workshop, all the departments have had a look at, all affected staff, it's been a back and forth. If their fee is recommended for increase, we have it justified to make sure it's appropriate for the cost of the service. So anyway, that's what's before you tonight, is kind of the final revision to the formatting, but the 2024 fee schedule.
Council members, are there any questions for City Administrator Volkers? All right, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to share their thoughts on the 2024 fee schedule, similar to what we've done before. If you would like to offer your comments, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and proceed with your comments. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back up for council consideration. Council members, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt Ordinance Number 919, establishing a fee schedule for 2024.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the fee schedule is adopted. One other action on this one is approving publication by title and summary. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2023-110, authorizing publication of Ordinance Number 919 by title and summary.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that is approved as well. We tackled open forum. Next up, consensus motions. These are our non-controversial items. Any council member has the opportunity to pull any of them for individual consideration. Council members, we have A through J in front of us. Nope. A through K. There's one hiding on the back page. Are there any that council members would like to pull for individual consideration?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull consensus motion B.
All right, we will take B off for now. Council members, are there any others? All right, so let's take action on A and C through K as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions A and C through K as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And A and C through K are approved. Next up, consensus motion B. Councilmember Morecambe, would you like to summarize that one quickly?
Yeah, this consensus motion is for the hire of ice rink attendants in the city of Oakdale, and I will formally be recusing myself from this vote because one of the applicants is my 16-year-old son.
All righty, very good. As Councilmember Morecambe said, these are our ice rink attendants, a very important job in our hockey rinks. Also, I'm sure we will still hire if anybody wants to, if anybody wants to step up. It's a good job. $15, $15, no, $16?
$15.
All right. You can reach out to city staff, but for the time being, let's take consensus motion B. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve consensus motion B as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And B is approved. Next up is our opportunity to check in with our advisory boards and commissions. The only one that met was the Economic Development Commission. Councilmember Herr is their council liaison. Noah?
Yeah.
What did the group work on?
You know, last week, the council, the commission met and talked about the BRIA program and just kind of what this next year's vision of pulling it all together, getting it organized, getting everyone trained in. So I think there was some good, healthy conversation around that. We also discussed what the vision of the commissions were going to be, and just looking over the work plan that was discussed at workshop by council and presented to the commission by staff. And the commission had voted to approve that work, that work plan and the scope of work there. And then Max, our community development professional, also presented on the different projects that was going on in the city as well. So it was very thorough a presentation. He covered almost all. So, yeah, I know, it was good.
Thank you. Noah? Yeah, I watched the YouTube recording, and they covered a lot of ground. There are a lot of development projects going on in our community, so nice for them to be updated and provide feedback. Award or bid, nothing tonight, so let's move on to staff reports. Engineering. City Engineer Jesse Farrell, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this item is associated with our 2024 Street Reconstruction Project. Tonight, I'll be asking for the council to consider accepting the feasibility report, authorizing preparation of plans and specifications, and then calling for an assessment hearing and an improvement hearing. So, this, our 2024 Street Project was initiated by council at the October 10 meeting, and we had a public informational meeting here in council chambers on November 8. Tonight, I'll go through just a brief presentation on the information you're considering. Following that, we would have assessment and improvement hearings in January, which all, excuse me, which all follows a process that we adhere to closely through Minnesota State Statute, the 429 process. And that process, it's very important that we follow it exactly because it's how cities apply special assessments to benefiting property owners. One important step is the feasibility report. So a feasibility report investigates the project. So in this case, it looks at the streets that we're considering reconstructing them. It looks at how we'll pay for it, what are the assessments according to our assessment And then it'll also, oh, excuse me.
Not you, Jesse.
Mothership.
So, this project, so Oakdale's done a fantastic job, really over the last 30 years, of making prudent, regular, annual investments in infrastructure. So we called a street project, but it's so much more than that. So this year, the street project, previously in our CIP, was a $3.8 million project. Through the feasibility report and the work that goes into that, that estimate's been refined, and thankfully, right now, it's been revised a little lower to about $3.6 million. But that $3.6 million goes to a lot more than the streets. About $800,000 of that is for utilities. So we'll make repairs to the water main, we'll replace storm sewer structures, we'll make sure that our sanitary sewer's in good condition and make any repairs, because making those repairs while the pavement's already ripped up is the most efficient time to do it. Also, anticipated in this project is reconstructing of the trail along Hadley and upgrading the city lighting, city lighting on Hadley and in the neighborhood streets that we're, that you're considering reconstructing. So it's really a full-scale look at the infrastructure in a very organized manner. Upon completion of this project, most of the city's streets will have been reconstructed from their original construction date. So on these streets, we have streets ranging from 30 to 40 years old. So within the feasibility report, it talks about how the pavement's in bad shape, and the best way to replace that is to grind up all the pavement, remove it, and then build up a new asphalt base. Thankfully, the curb and gutter in the project areas are, is in good shape, so we'll just do, we're proposing spot repair. We're going to, just before the project, if everything follows the process as anticipated, just before the project, we'll have public work staff operate all the water valves. That way, if we find out there's something that needs to be reconstructed, that's the time we want that information. We don't really want to find out in the winter. We're also in the process of televising all the pipes out there, so we'll review those videos and look for areas where pipe is settled or cracked. We'll look at storm sewer structures, sediment will accumulate, so we'll clean, dredge out those areas as part of this process. So, one way the city pays for a lot, a big portion of this project, is through special assessments to property owners. So each year, people benefiting property owners end up paying a portion of the cost, and that's calculated very carefully using our assessment policy. And so that's consistent year to year with modest increase at the council's discretion. This year, that total amount is $585,500, and that's spread out over 400 benefiting So following tonight, if the council authorizes, we'd have the improvement assessment hearings in January. We would also, we'd bring this back to the council again to approve those plans after they're finished. We would expect to receive bids, public bids for the project in April, all so that we could start construction in May and then be wrapped up, hopefully around the time school starts. This year, with construction on Hadley, we're going to have to carefully coordinate it with reconstruction occurring on 50th Street, that Washington County will be doing it about the same time. So we'll be doing a lot of messaging and working with some of the homeowner associations and in close partnership with the fire department to minimize any negative impacts during So with that, it's staff recommendation that the council accept the feasibility report tonight for city project R 202401, also authorize the preparation of plans and specifications, and then also call for the public improvement and assessment hearings for January 23, 2024. With that, if there's any questions, and I'm here for that.
Thank you, Jesse. Council members, any questions for Jesse? This is always the most thrilling part of our job. Has to be done, though, right? All right, council members, I didn't hear any questions. I will look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2023-122, accepting the feasibility report for city project, excuse me, R 2024-01, 2024 Street Improvements, authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a service contract with an engineering consultant for the preparation of plans and specifications, and calling for the public improvement and assessment hearing on January 23, 2024.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final comments. The only comment I would make is for residents in the impacted project area, mark that date on your calendar, January 23, 2024. That is when we will be talking about special assessments, adopting the assessment role. Looking at City Administrator Volkers, just to make sure that's right. Property owners will get a letter from the city saying if you want to come and talk about that or appeal your assessment, special assessment, that is your opportunity to do so. So this is just kind of a proactive heads-up. January 23, we'll be talking about this project again. So, there's a motion. There was a second. We had a little conversation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that feasibility report is accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Next, let's check in with Julie Williams, our Recreation Superintendent. Julie, welcome.
Mayor and Council, the Recreation Department received six donations for our annual Family Fun Fladables, which was held back in September, and just wanted to say thank you to our sponsors, and those were the Oakdale Athletic Association, American Legion Post 30, New Horizon Academy, Marcus Theaters, North Star Skate School, East Metro Stars Hockey, and Parkview Chiropractic. And per policy and state statute, we do need to formally accept the donations. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Council members, any questions for Julie? All right, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2023-121, accepting donations from various sponsors in an amount totaling $3,400 for sponsorship of the Family Fun Fladables event.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Final comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And those donations are graciously accepted by the city of Oakdale. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Next up, time to check in with our city attorney, Mr. Thompson. Anything?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, nothing specific to report, so I have any other questions.
Council members, any questions for Jim? All right, let's turn to our right and check in with our city administrator, Ms. Volkers. Chris, did we mess up when we adopted the agenda? We forgot to add the commission assignments for 2024.
No, Mr. Mayor, we can do that in January, just had to be decided, so it's ready for the agenda.
Had to have the conversation. Got it. All righty. Well, let's check in on the things under your section.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I do have one specific thing on the agenda, and then I'm certainly open to answer any questions that come up. We already did the franchise fee change from a flat rate to a 3% across the board, change for CenterPoint in North St. Paul Electric. We have three services in Oakdale. The third one with Excel Energy took a little bit more documentation to get it done. And so what's before you today is similar motions that you already did for CenterPoint and Excel for a franchise fee of, with a percent of 3% instead of a flat fee. So you've got many motions before you, half of which are for the publication summary. The ordinances have been posted on the website, proposed ordinances, as of a week and a half ago. And as soon as you adopt them, they'll be posted as permanent if you adopt them tonight. And then the publication, though, is a summary publication for each, because they're, again, they're very expensive, very long to publish in the newspaper, so we're asking for consideration of that. So if somebody could go through each motion, that'd be great.
One by one, we'll tick right down the list. First things first, council members, any questions for Chris? All right, who's going to start it off?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Ordinance Number 915, granting certain permissions to Excel Energy for the furnishing of electric energy to the city.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that resolution, no, ordinance is adopted. Next.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2023-123, authorizing publication of ordinance number 915 by title and summary.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that resolution is adopted, next.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 916, granting certain permissions to Excel Energy for the furnishing of gas energy to the city.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that ordinance is adopted, next.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2023-124, authorizing publication of ordinance number 916 by title and summary.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that resolution is adopted.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 917, setting a franchise fee on electric operations within the city of Oakdale, Northern State's Power, DBA, Excel Energy.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Oh, okay, okay, that motion, yeah, sorry, that ordinance is adopted four to one, next.
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2023-125, authorizing publication of ordinance number 917 by title and summary.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, final comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that resolution is adopted, next.
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 918, setting a franchise fee on gas operations within the city of Oakdale, Northern State's Power, DBA, Excel Energy.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That ordinance is approved four to one, next.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2023-126, authorizing publication of ordinance number 918 by title and summary.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that resolution is adopted. Woo, you got a cough drop, or?
All right.
Next up is council presentations, councilmembers, anybody wanna share anything?
You know, with this being our last council meeting, I just want to take a moment and just wish all of our residents a happy holidays, you know, within the Mung community during this time of the year, it's always a Mung New Year, and so I just want to give a special shout-out to my community as well, happy Mung New Year to you guys.
Thank you. How about down here, councilmembers, anything?
Well, to add to your comments, Noah, I was actually able to attend the Tartan Asian Student Association and their Mung New Year event, and it was absolutely amazing, the talent that these kids have, so I really encourage anyone, even if they've never been to a Mung New Year before, to go and check it out at North, check it out at Tartan, because really, it, it's a great program they put together.
Wonderful. Councilmember Inger Britson?
I have nothing.
All righty, I got a few. Santa's coming, mark your calendars, he's gonna be here tomorrow, and he's coming to town on his decorated fire truck, so bundle up and stop by for a pick with Santa, he will start at the North Fire Station at 6:00 PM, I heard Noah Rad already had him on radar, so he will be there on time, we know he will, and he'll be making stops along the way at the Discovery Center, Hadley, oh, at Everly Park, Hadley and Stillwater Boulevard, and then ending here at City Hall roughly around 7:20, so if you want to time yourself along that route, what is that for, maybe over 20 minutes, you know, 25 minutes, so you can visit the city's website, oakdalelemmon.gov, or I think it's also on oakdalefun.org, com?
Yeah.
Com, thanks, Julie. I also saw, out taking a walk today, there are signs at all of the locations, so there's just a little yard sign out saying that's where Santa's gonna stop, so keep an eye out for that, it's right on Hadley Avenue. A big event this Saturday, it is the Winter Wonderland Event, taking place at the Discovery Center, 4444 Hadley Avenue North, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, this is a huge event every year, our residents love it, and we're gonna have amazing weather for it, not gonna be snow, but it's gonna be warmer than usual. Activities include horse-drawn hayrides, holiday face painting, a petting zoo, breakfast, candy cane hunt, holiday crafts, a visit with Santa, and more. This event is free, and I want to give a big shout-out to our event partners, the Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce, First Resource Bank, and our Oakdale Recreation Team. It takes a lot to pull off this big event, and they do an amazing job with it every single year, I hope our residents and visitors and anybody can come out and check out this event. I'll be out there, I think I'm filling juice cups or something, so, you know, reached out to the organizers, and they signed me up for a, a volunteer shift, but come on out, say hi. Also a plug, I know parking can always get a little crazy, because it gets busy, you can park down both sides of Hadley, just please don't block driveways, mailboxes, fire hydrants, that's all we ask, feel free to fan out a little bit, I'm just gonna guess by mid-morning, you're not gonna get a spot in the parking lot, so just find, find some street parking, you can even park down side residential streets, those are open as well, but come join us at the Discovery Center, there's a lot going on, so a big thank you to our event partners, and we hope to see you there. Finally, as I mentioned, at the start of our meeting, this is our last meeting of the year, so on behalf of my city council colleagues and everybody here at the city, I want to wish all of our residents a very joyous holiday season, please be safe, please have way too much sugar in food to eat, like, it's always, it's always a very enriching and rejuvenating time of the year, but we wish you very happy holidays. I suppose we gotta pay the bills. Councilmembers, we have a claims roster in front of us, November 29th through 2023, nope, let me try that again, November 29th, 2023 through December 12th, 2023, in the amount of just over $1.5 million, can I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve claims for the period November 29th, 2023 to December 12th, 2023, in the amount of $1,570,650.63.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, final comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the bills are paid for another meeting, another month, we're good, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you, and good night.